Josh, get to your seat. Everybody's stuck with me tonight. Kent is on vacation and Steve got called away on an emergency meeting. So you're stuck with the three of us. And tonight we have Kathy Kramer here and Bill Suxton and myself, Tina French. And we have nobody in the audience that wants to say anything. So consent agenda, we have before us the meetings from the October meeting and the financial report. I need a motion to accept those.
I'll make a motion to accept the prior meeting minutes.
Second. Motion called in second in to approve the minutes and the financial report, Bill? Bill?
We're gonna make a motion to approve.
Did you, can you just add financial report to your motion?
Adding financial report to my motion. Thank you.
Okay, comments from citizens present. Is there anybody that didn't sign up that would like to talk? Awesome. Committee briefings. I am in charge of the sewer committee for the board and we have been waiting on this report, which we did receive back and we will be discussing that tonight as a board and then sending this to the sewer committee. So the sewer committee will be meeting December, I don't know what that date is, 13th will be our next meeting. So nothing to report there. Special projects, events and communication.
Okay, well, big news is our Airstream diffusers are on and working. They have been for about a week now. And as scheduled, as usual, the installer called and was wanting to know some information about bubble plumes and patterns and whatnot. And due to the information that I sent him and pictures, he said that everything appears to be running normal. We haven't had any mishaps as of yet. So, so far, so good. It's really an improvement and I think the lake is gonna benefit from it. May not be instantaneous, but in the long run, it's gonna do nothing but improve the water quality. So kudos to DeWitt for having the thing put in and all everybody's hard work. It was really nice. We're gonna have ribbon cutting on the 13th of November at 10:00.
10:00, I believe.
So if you're willing to come out and...
At Sandpoint or where?
Yeah, Sandpoint Boat Ramp. That's Water Avenue, I believe they call it. So you can Google it, find out where it is if you don't know where Sandpoint Boat Ramp is.
Okay, November 13th, 10:00 a.m.
Public is welcome.
Got it. Thank you. Josh, will you be putting that out in a PSA?
Yeah, I'll get it out on Constant Contact and everything and probably get all the news guard and...
See if they can put it at least on their mobile.
Put a little blurb out or something.
Oh, it has. Awesome.
Thanks, Sue.
So yeah, if we could show that and get it on our Facebooks and stuff, that'd be great. So I've seen just random neighborhood people around the lake have been posting pictures. So yeah, it's great, I think. Save Our Shoreline and Water Monitoring, here she comes.
I've been calling and calling the OregonWild.org number and finally they referred my message to the ODFNW conservation biologist who is in charge of fish and turtles, I think. I kinda thought it wasn't just turtles.
Oh, yeah, turtles.
But her name is Sandra Barnes and I forwarded to you what her letter was, her email. And I'll just give a quick excerpt instead of the, just a quick note thing. Thank you for your interest in Western Pond turtle conservation. As I mentioned and as related in the question of the possibility of participating in some sort of turtle head-starting release effort, ODFNW does not conduct or authorize the head-starting or translocation moving introduction of Oregon native turtles. So we're out as the nursery business.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they don't do it in Oregon. What the Oregon Zoo is doing, and she explained this to me, the Oregon Zoo is doing a Washington program.
Oh, my word.
Yes. So who knew? So what they, what we discussed was, so we can't do our little aquarium and raise 15 turtles thing, you know, 'cause I said, "I've got three people who would raise turtles." She said, "Well, no, because we're running into problems with the head-start program from Washington," not from, but the Washington program, "because the turtles are getting ulcers under their little carapaces, their little shells, their little shells on top. They're getting problems and it has to do either with being raised too quickly, you know, how kids can raise and their bones are brittle. So the turtles get either raised, raised too quickly, or I thought it was maybe a nutrition thing that we don't know what to feed them that they're finding in the wild." So she recommended that we work on habitats for turtles. And I said, "Well, I think they grow in the wetlands and come across the lake when they're hot. So we might need some turtle crossing signs." So we had a nice discussion. She's a really nice lady. She said, "I would like to see what you're doing," 'cause I explained to her, "we have aeration going for about 10 days now. We have floating gardens, we have Save Our Shores, we have projects going on, all the things that have been going on." And she said, "That sounds really interesting. I'd like to come over and see it." And I said, "Well, I'd like to have you here for a workshop to talk about turtles." So we're gonna, I'm gonna hand that over to you and her information and maybe you could set up something in February, March.
Sounds good, Mary.
So if you don't raise them, can you get a couple, if we work on a habitat area, can you trans...
It's illegal or something in Oregon to move turtles, yes. And I said, "Well, we wouldn't be raiding their nests. We wouldn't be doing that."
We'd go through the proper adoption process.
But I sent you the website. There is a turtle sighting reporting website and she is very interested that we might have Western Pond turtles on Devil's Lake because she's never heard about that. But they have to have red under their eyes or something and she said, "You have to get up close to see them." And I said, "I think Tina's pretty sure she's got one."
No.
So report that, Tina. It's the, I think it's the third website on her email and it's about turtle sightings. And you just report it and that'll bring her out too. Because they're very interested in proliferating turtles, naturally not by putting 15 in an aquarium and growing them quickly. She convinced me that that's not the way to do it. So that's the update on Western Pond turtle, one of two.
So what is the zoo gonna do with them once they're fully raised?
That's preliminary, that's probably not supposed to be out. Information that they're kinda running into a problem with raising them artificially rather than in nature. So we're better off raising them in nature. And I said, "Well, that sounds like it's a slow road if we have two turtles."
Well, sure, but like in Costa Rica where, you know...
Mexico.
And does Mexico do the same thing? They go out and they do raid the nests?
But those are ocean turtles.
Sure, but I mean, if we could do the same type of thing because...
Protect their nests.
Protect, yeah. Have them in a habitat where they're...
Yeah. ODFNW might not be behind that project, but...
Play some Barry White at night?
Yes, night moves. So, but she's willing to come out and talk to us about Western Pond turtles. And I think, you know, we aren't gonna get 15 little ones like that to raise because they're not healthy. They have indigenous problems when you push them, raise them unnaturally.
Sure, that makes sense.
Feed them cat food or whatever. So it's better to have them grow up, it's better to have them grow up naturally. So that's where the direction we're going is habitat.
So is she willing to set a date with you at a future time?
With Josh? I said, "I'll get my lake manager on that."
We'll get it. We got that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Okay, projects and operations. Devil's Lake Conservation Aeration Project, Josh?
All righty, we have all kinds of stuff to talk about tonight. All 25 air diffusers are active and in the lake. Everything went great. I'll just say swimmingly. When John came down with Lakesavers and got everything put in, we didn't have any issues. Everything fired up fine. We're operating now. The only thing we need to do next steps for the project completion is to get a wood fence around it and put up some type of surveillance. Spoke with Bill earlier today. He went out and we've got a game cam up and some few things that we can keep an eye on stuff with. And also the fence is gonna be done here shortly. We're, you know, we've got the dimensions and everything and I think Bill has got a crew on that. So that is that. Everything is going great. Well, you know, I'll keep monitoring and everything with the XO to make sure the numbers are coming up. There's not gonna be a lot of information we're gonna tell this winter 'cause things kinda naturally flip over. We'll get more dissolved oxygen on the bottom of the lake as we know.
When did we put the XO in the water?
XO was about this time last year, I believe.
Oh, so from now on, we'll have comparative data?
Yeah, we should, we're working on now having that full year.
Okay, cool.
Of collecting. So that'll be really great to be able to go back to that, especially next summer because we've monitored all summer with all that. And we'll be able to see like, hey, this is 2018, this is 2019 and in between that, of course, we know we've installed the aeration on the bottom.
Great.
The Devil's Lake video monitoring project is also going along very well. All the cameras are up and installed. We've got everything in. Thank you once again to Vivian's, Bill and Ann for helping us with that project and getting it all put in and locating it on their property and letting us use their restaurant for their power grid and everything else to get that hooked up. So we're very appreciative there. We do have some test shots up, which I sent a couple links out to the board to kinda take a look at it. There's a couple of little kinks we're ironing out. The cameras need a little more power, so we had another adapter that we've gotta get in there and just some basic stuff to get it all lined out. But they're gonna work great. We're only 3,000 in on an $8,000 budget there, so we will most definitely have enough to do two more cameras. We're kinda looking at the Sandpoint area and maybe also getting that weather station up too and being able to get that all piped into the website. But we are working towards that.
Right.
The Airstream shoreline aerator has been operating, been doing a great job down there off Vivian's dock as well. It's cut that channel open and it's definitely been moving some water. We see tons of fish in that area as well. They just absolutely love that higher oxygen in that stream. So that's done a lot of, a lot of good there as well. I've talked with a couple of people over on Crystal Lagoon over by, that's next to Third Street Canal, I think, kinda in the middle there. Yeah, and I've had a property owner that's volunteered his area and potentially, he's a licensed electrician as well, so he will most likely even do the hookup for us. And then we'll cover the monthly electrical costs of operating that. But that'll be an outstanding location to put that equipment. It's completely confined. They have some issues with sediment and all that muck and stuff we've been dealing with and having such great luck getting rid of with this shoreline unit this last year. So Bill and I plan on, and getting that, moving that direction sometime in the next couple weeks here as soon as we can get taps and everything hooked up, place for it to land. The D River Devil's Lake sediment and debris control program that we're working on at the south end of the lake to try and deal with some of the issue that's building up down there and choking off the outflow. There's been a lot of effort and research done in this dating way back into the 70s even that I've found. So I'm digging through our archives in the district right now and I've found a couple of plans that the Army Corps of Engineers had put together that has a few options in it. One of those options that was chosen was to do periodic debris removal. Keep in mind, this was back in the 70s. So that's what the, before the district was even here, that's what the city and stakeholders decided to do was periodic debris removal. And that worked great up until the point at which there started to be heavier, tighter regulations on moving sediment and debris. One of those regulations no longer allowed our fire department to be able to open up that channel using water jets. Since then, nothing has really replaced that option. We've been able, of course, to get the logs and some of the larger debris out of the way. Bill's done a great job, especially this last year after that round of King Tides beat us up. That's gonna keep happening, but digress. Nothing has replaced getting rid of the sand that washes in every year. So out of that option of periodic debris removal, nothing has periodically removed the sand over the course of about 25 or more years. So I'm reapproaching the US Army Corps right now after I finish going through this documentation to see what options that they have on paper from back in the 70s might still work and if there are any new ones that will both be allowed to do and that they would be involved with doing. Because as a flood control project, generally speaking, the federal government will assist on that because it's residential property versus flooding issues. So that's how we're gonna try and take a look at it and see what the Corps can do for us as a next step on that program.
Oh, good idea.
Water quality of the lake has been absolutely outstanding. We've had a little extra green algae. Of course, we don't know if that's just due to the fact that there's a few more nutrients being stirred up with the aeration system just being so young and being in there just a few days. Nothing has been really problematic or extra thick at this point, great. We have had no sign of any cyanobacteria or habs or anything harmful. So that's the most important thing. So we'll continue to operate that throughout the winter. I'll continue to monitor with the XO platform. Bill's volunteered to let me even use his boat 'cause I can't get out there in a little district boat this winter when it gets too choppy, to keep monitoring and seeing what that aeration system is gonna do for us on the bottom. So very exciting there. The visibility has been great, other than the little bit of buildup in algae. The last time I did went out, I did go out and sample the last three points down the middle of the lake. That's our treatment area, north, south and in the middle of it. We'd already had our DO start to flip over and come over on the bottom seasonally like we've seen in the past. So everything's kind of in a natural cycle at that point. We'll just continue to watch that and monitor and I'll report any changes.
Great, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments on projects and operations? Nope, all right. New business. The only new business I have is we have a gentleman that has submitted an application to be on the special projects committee and he is here tonight. Austin, do you wanna come up and introduce yourself and we'll review your committee or your application? Yep, yep, just state your name and your address and tell us a little bit about yourself.
All right. My name is Austin Kazner. I'm at 6539 Southwest Harbor down in Cutler City and just interested in joining the special projects committee to help out with events that, you know, bring, bring fun and things to do to the lake. So anything I can do to contribute, sounds good to me.
Great. And you do live in the district. I noticed that you clicked no, but Cutler City actually is in the district.
Did I? Oh, okay. Wasn't sure if that...
I know that because I had to go door-to-door and campaign down there.
Okay, okay.
Or I got to go door-to-door, I should say. I talked to a lot of nice people. Okay, that's great. Has everybody got Austin's application? I am not sure if we need a motion, but under the abundance of caution, just in case we do, does anybody wanna make a motion to accept this application for the special projects committee?
I'll take the gamble. I'll make the motion that we bring Mr. Austin on board to the special projects committee. Be more than happy to have you on board.
Thanks.
Great. We have a motion and accept, and a second to accept Austin Kazner as the special projects committee member. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you so much, Austin. It's awesome to see your interest in the lake and your willingness to serve. And the guy right behind you will scoop you up and get you busy. Don't you worry.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
I've got one other new business topic. And that is I'd like to make some funds possible for some navigation buoys that are needed in some hazardous areas around the lake. We tried to approach, actually staff tried to approach the Sheriff's Department and with no avail, they don't have any funds. So I'd like to make those funds available through the district for the buoys if we have a second.
How, like...
It would be about $1,500 from the improvement fund to go into field and office equipment under the general fund to cover the purchase of three navigational buoys at approximately $400 to $500 each.
And we, we can just put those in the water?
I got a permit from the Oregon State Marine Board and they said that yes, we can. So we are good to go.
Okay, so $1,500 from the improvement fund to...
General fund for field and office equipment.
And fund, field.
Oh...
And I presume we do need a motion for that, to move those funds?
Yeah, yeah, please.
The other thing is that our cameras on the D River, I know that we can, we can see what they're, what they view, but it's not a constant feed. It's kinda sporadic. So I'd like to see the full-blown internet feed that we can get so when we, when we look at those cameras on the internet, there's actually something going on instead of just a still shot.
They will be full video, right?
They can be full video. That's what we're running into is we've kinda been borrowing some of the Wi-Fi from local areas and we can do like still shots, kinda like a traffic cam, you know, 10 to 15 seconds and then it refreshes and you've got a new shot. To do full motion video is gonna take a great deal of bandwidth 'cause those cameras will go all the way up to 1080p. So we can dial them back and not have to take quite as much, but to do actual full motion video, it takes a lot of internet space. I've looked at both sites, where we're looking at Sandpoint and out at Vivian's where we already have the cameras up. We've got four to five bars under 4G. Talked to Verizon and about, approximately $50 per location, we can do a hotspot and just set up basically a jet pack in a weatherproof box and then that'll feed into the camera and we'll...
$80 a month?
Yes.
So $100 a month?
Yes. So it'd be a recurring cost for the district to take on. But I wanted to kinda put that out there because that would definitely give us better functionality of those things, so...
Maybe I'll re- draw the motion and wait until the other board members are present so we can get some feedback on whether or not it's justifiable.
I think the, I think the buoys is fine to vote on tonight.
Right, yeah.
But yeah, we may wanna discuss this other one.
Okay.
Can we use, if we are $3,000 into a grant and we, it costs us another $3,000 for the Sandpoint site, could the other $2,000 cover a couple years of the Wi-Fi?
I'll look into it, but I don't think that's out of the realm of possibility, so...
So do we have a motion about the buoys?
No, we need a motion. Sorry, I was making a note.
We have to put the, pay $500 each for the three buoys?
$1,500, yeah.
Yeah, for the three buoys.
I'll second it.
So a motion has been made to move $1,500 from our improvement fund to general fund of field office and equipment to pay for three navigational buoys. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. So you'll get those ordered, Josh?
Yes.
Okay. Terrific. Any other new business? Anybody have anything else to say on or off agenda?
The south end of the lake, right down there where it bends 90 degrees and goes east to west, there's been, yeah...
The old island area?
Yeah, over by Rock Creek. You know what I'm talking about? It's just you see that little patch of rush, I think, that comes up about every year. And according to Noel and a few other people around the lake, there's been a couple people have ran into it with jet skis this last year and it's becoming more of a hazard. And that's when I approached the State Marine Board and they said, "Sure, we can grant you, you know, three hazard buoys out there." So we just, we just have to buy them and set them.
Any other comments? Oh.
So those, excuse me.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Yeah, those buoys, you said we have to put them out?
Yeah, we will have to install them. So we'll have to anchor them out there.
And do we take them in, in the wintertime or...
I'd say we'll probably leave them out there. 365 would be my...
'Cause we're gonna end up having to retrieve them if...
Oh, are they gonna break, are they gonna break out in the winter if we leave them out?
More than likely, maybe not the first year.
Okay. Well, no, I mean, if they're not, if it's not, if it's something we can't overwinter, then yeah, we can pull them and store them.
Yeah, I think typically they, they pull them out and they install them through the, is it Labor Day, Memorial Day? Or Memorial Day through Labor Day? It's through that period that we can have them in, in the water.
All right. Well, you think this year then, since we're at the tail of the season, we'll just chill out until spring and then I'll go ahead and order them up, have them on, on deck?
Sounds good.
Yeah, and install them in the middle of May.
Yeah, 'cause I don't wanna lose them. Those things are 500 bucks each.
Yeah. Well, they're not gonna go too far.
Yeah, they're gonna wash out to the ocean, yeah.
Any other board comments or announcements?
One more question?
Yes.
Do you have any idea where the buoys went that we had the data finders on?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Just curious, 'cause I don't know. The last place I saw them was at your house, so...
Yeah.
So do you put them out or do you store them?
Okay. Well, we know where it's at, so...
So were they dropped off at your place or have you always had them?
Yeah.
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 Sure.
The new ones, we oughta be able to ID. I think they're 44 inches long and a 14-inch collar, so you can't miss them.
We should have bill with scencled on them or something.
You know, I could, yeah, yeah, that's a good idea. They come with the markings, you know, the hazard or whatever you want.
Right, right. But you can put those black...
Property of us.
Right. The last thing, everybody got the Civil West report from, on the sewer. If you could take time to read through that and I had the opportunity to meet with Josh and just ask him some questions and he got great answers for me and even wrote me little Post-it notes with pink flags. So if you have the chance to do that, or maybe you understand everything in there, but if we could get this back to Josh, if you have any changes, Civil West can make, 'cause I would like to get this out to the sewer committee as soon as possible so they have as much time to review it before our December meeting. And I will round back with Steve and Kent on that as well. And then if you don't hear from everybody in the next couple days, can you just reach out and say, "I'm gonna publish it as is unless anybody has some comments so we can get this out by the end of next week to, unless there's changes." But if there are no changes, I'd like to get this out to the sewer committee.
I could do that.
Does anybody oppose to that if there's no changes?
Oh, no, I'm not.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Anything else, Kathy?
No, I just surprised you with scencels.
I know. Don't leave me in charge. You know how much I love meetings. All right, nothing else from there. We are adjourned. I like doing that.
Yes.
So, I don't know if you...
I have an issue with that. I mean, is it, is it information that they have that states that the water is loaded with these, with the nitrates and phosphorus? 'Cause I had a little...
This is, this is directly from the report that we already have, from the PACE report?
Yeah, and it was done in 2015.
Yes.
So I'm curious to see if they have documentation on readings of what they're claiming is...
I don't know...
Nutrient contamination?
The PACE report?
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know.